Morning, everyone. Welcome to Penale County Board of Supervisors December 8, 2021, special session. Supervisor Sertie will be attending telephonically. I believe he's on. Is that correct?
Yes, Chairman. Supervisor Sertie is on the line. Supervisor Sertie?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, Jeff. All right. First item is decision approval or disapproval of an IGA on the transportation funding agreement between Penale Regional Transportation Authority and Penale County. Someone here to present. Jason, I hate to break the news to you, but Jason, you're up. Just give us a brief description of what we're doing here.
Absolutely. All right, members of the board, thank you. My name is Jason Bachan. I am the Transportation Planning Supervisor for Penale County Public Works. We have two IGAs. One is for the named road projects in the Phase 1 of the PRTA plan. This is getting ready for hopefully a positive outcome from the Arizona State Supreme Court. And that's really what this is, is the agreement for lead agencies for all of the different road projects that are within the plan there.
Okay.
I can answer questions if you have them specifically.
Does anyone have any questions about this IGA?
Mr. Chair, if I, if I, thank you, if I might, just to make sure for clarification, all of these projects and things that were, that's being proposed here are all the ones that were proposed in part of the election process, correct?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. These are taken directly from the plan that I believe the board approved in 2017 and most voters voted on.
I just want to make sure that we get that on the record for the, for the public to know that that's what we're doing.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number one as presented.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I just have it. Thank you. Item number two is a discussion approval/disapproval of an IGA between Penale County and the Regional Transportation Authority and Penale County's for reimbursement of expenses advanced to establish the progress of the reimbursing of the county funds.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to ask that this item be continued to the next meeting. If you would look at Section 4 of this document, there's a blank in there as the number of dollars that the county is submitting to RTA to get reimbursed for. We're still kind of going through all those invoices. We just received some more as of last week, and we thought we would have them all by the time of the meeting that we'd have a number for you. We want to verify that number, and we believe there's still an outstanding invoice or two we may receive this month. So we're going to ask that this one be continued to the next meeting, the 15th, so that we can hopefully plug a number in there.
Absolutely. It makes sense. Let's get it all together at one time, so.
Because we're currently over a million dollars as it is right now.
Currently, as of through October, we're at 1.4. So we're $1,483,819.29. That is both for the election costs to run the election, for the legal, for the defense with the court case, and then reimbursement for both CAG, Wilson &amp; Company, we hired our consultants to run the PRTA and such.
Right.
Okay, perfect.
So with those type of numbers, we want to make sure that we can get reimbursed for all the costs up to date, so that's what we're trying to verify at this point.
Absolutely. So can I get a motion to continue this item? That's what you want to continue, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. To the 15th. Are you certain?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we continue item two until December 15th.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I just have it. Thank you. Okay. Brings us to work session item, presentation by Be Connected. Who do we have here? Oh, Mr. Melnick. Joel. There you are.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm just going to give a brief introduction here, and I'm going to turn it over to our esteemed guest here with the Arizona Coalition for Military Families. I know a few weeks ago, or maybe a month or so ago, you had a presentation by HOHP, Kim and Udo Cook, telling about the great work that they're doing with their veteran population within the county through Arizona at Work. I'm going to introduce Ayla Linder with the Arizona Coalition for Military Families, who's going to share with you information on not only the coalition, but a program called Be Connected that they have, a number of resources that we are going to be formally strengthening our partnership between Arizona at Work and the Penale County Workforce Development Board and the Coalition for continued efforts in serving our military families and veterans as far as employment is concerned. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Ayla Linder of the Coalition for Military Families.
Hello. I am Ayla Linder with the Arizona Coalition for Military Families. I'm an Air Force veteran. I'm physically stationed down in, was stationed in Davis-Monthan and physically living there now. I'll be out about four years now in January, so the Coalition is very near and dear to my heart, and I'm very honored to be in front of you gentlemen today to present something that we've been working on for a very long time with Penale County, Arizona at Work, in regards to bringing Be Connected ecosystem to the county, providing a very large tapestry of resources for our veterans and their family members in Penale County. Next slide, please. As you guys see here, the Be Connected ecosystem support is a very interesting wheel, and I really love this graphic, just because I'm a visual person, but also because there is just so much to the ecosystem that exists within Be Connected. We introduced this ecosystem in 2017 as a way to, you know, basically create an ecosystem within each county across Arizona, to combine the efforts of volunteerism, the ecosystem of business opportunity through the veterans who are entrepreneurs in each county, but also the faith systems and faith communities that are in each of the counties across Arizona. As you guys see here, the wheel of support starts with the right resource at the right time. And on our website, we basically match all veterans and/or family members, and also supporters of the military community. That could be a caregiver, or a dependent, or even a neighbor. You can go onto our website and be matched with, using a fancy algorithm on our website, with resources that specifically align with that veteran or their family members' need at that time. We've got about 3,000 resources, and those are all connected to about 450 vetted partners. And as you guys see here, there's just a myriad of, you know, support. There are social workers, there are different types of medical and mental health services. We've also got a way to basically align with that person who goes to our website or calls our support line to figure out where they're at and what kinds of needs that they need at that time. For example, somebody might go to the website and they just need a simple food pantry, you know, resource connection, and they're new to the community and they're not sure, you know, as a veteran, where exactly they can get that help. So by aligning with the Be Connected ecosystem of support, those different community partners will then be aligned with this one resource. It's a one-stop shop, and they're connected then to those resources. For example, as I said, the food pantry. That can go all the way up to employment services, 12 determinants of health, right? And basically looking at all of the different resources that someone might need at that time. And what we're going to do is try to remove those barriers that veterans and their families, you know, constantly see, myself as a veteran and a woman veteran, combat veteran to be specific, I also saw and continue to see barriers to employment for a very large amount of reasons. And so we try to dissolve those barriers by working with the communities, using Be Connected support. Next slide, please. As you guys see here, the Career Navigation Program is huge. It's expanding every day. So basically, when you're looking at the three areas of support, you're going to see the statewide skill bridge program. We would like to fully collaborate with Penale County to focus on coordinating efforts to strengthen the labor supply chain that we know exists that is basically hurting and bleeding in every county across Arizona. A way that we've designed to work with the DOD is creating the skill bridge program, and with an MOU across all active duty, guard, and reserve bases in Arizona, we have developed a pipeline from the service member and highlighting certain areas across Arizona that could be a great opportunity for them to relocate to, find, you know, an area of a career choice, whether that's at county level, you know, at a private sector business, or as an entrepreneur in a smaller town across Arizona. We receive referrals from all of the bases, and what we do is when the service member says that they are interested in internship, they get paid by the DOD to then work the last six months of their retirement, or if they're just, you know, a six-year type of military member, the last six months they're allowed to then go to an employer of their choice that's been vetted by either Arizona Coalition or the DOD, and they're allowed to then get paid by the DOD, which is great, right, to get paid to do an internship at an employer of their choice. So I'm here today to tell the county that we're looking for partners in the, all the different counties across Arizona, specifically Penale County, to showcase Penale County as an ideal place for those service members to retire and to utilize this internship opportunity by bringing on businesses in Penale County to the Be Connected platform, vetting, and being part of the skill bridge program. You'll also see a project that we have, which is a total navigation, and this is a project funded by Boeing. It's going to provide the support for the veterans of all eras. Say a veteran is looking to upscale themselves, but they cannot, you know, they don't have GI Bill benefits, funding for school, things like that, or they're lacking transportation, or they're lacking essential needs, right? So we provide support, once again, the Be Connected ecosystem of support, and we provide the support for those veterans to either upscale, find better employment, so that they can figure out what they want to do, and, you know, in their, we call it second career after they retire, or just help situate them with their families in regards to a faith community, you know, a place of worship, or also a place where they can meet with other veterans. And we basically are working with Arizona at Work to utilize local resources, so that we're not reinventing the wheel. We're not reinventing, you know, a new vet center or a new place of connecting, utilizing those, those areas in the communities. And then you guys will see the Arizona Veterans Support of Employer, and specifically, we were, we are asking here in front of the Penale County is that, as I had spoken before, we really want to bring on any and all veterans of support employers who would like to partner with the Coalition, and that we can either offer veterans and their families a position where we are offering that employer resources to better serve those employees that are veterans, and/or create a pipeline, as I had mentioned, from Davis-Monthan, from Luke Air Force Base, Fort Wachukka, from the Navy Station, and so on and so forth, MCAS, the Marine, excuse me, the Marine Base as well. And what we also do is we help with the HR perspective, right? We go through all the resumes, we go through all of the recruitment, we do all that for the employers. So it's a really great cost-saving measure, and we are all veterans on the team. I've got a team of career specialists that actually work with the member, or the veteran, or the spouse, and help them align their skills, so that the employer can better see exactly what they're getting and, you know, better aligning those candidates for hire. Specifically with small businesses, I'm a small business owner myself outside of this job, my husband is as well, and my father is as well. So we come from a long line of entrepreneurs with a very small overhead because we have a very small budget and a very small revenue stream. So I understand completely how it feels not to be able to recruit and to be able to afford those line items. So the Coalition's a no-cost service. We will never, you know, charge the employer, never charge the organization or the community service for our efforts. Next slide, please. As you guys see here, the Coalition, we've been established in 2009, and this Be Connected ecosystem that I've introduced today has been established since 2017, so it's been a couple of years. We're finally figuring it out, right? Just like a startup, we're figuring it out what works, what doesn't, and we're trying to figure out how to best meet the needs of the veterans and their families. In Penale County, there is, you know, a very large amount, about 7% of the county's population are veterans. If you include their family members, you're looking at 20% of Penale County's population being veterans. So that's a pretty substantial amount when you're looking and comparing that to other counties across Arizona. And so that's where we would like to focus our efforts and then continue to branch out into other needs, you know, as the county sees fit. Next slide, please. We also have statewide support. From 2015 to 2020, the governor's proclamation and successive years, we are basically their key stakeholders. We are funded by the Governor's Office of Youth, Faith, and Family, as well as the VA, and we are also funded and supported by the Arizona Department of Veteran Services. And you see a little picture there on the slide of the directors and the governor, and Director Wanda Wright. Next slide, please. And you guys see there, natural recognition and collaboration. As I had said, the VA, you also see National Guard, and you do see the CDC. We're doing a lot of collective impact strategic initiatives with CDC in regards to medical and mental health as well, within the veteran community and their families. Next slide, please. And we are also featured in New York Times. So that's great. That was our suicide prevention that did gain bipartisan support. We recently were actually awarded an MTEC grant in collaboration now with the CDC that we're going to be working on installations to help with the upstream suicide prevention with veterans, so doing the same thing we're doing here in each of the counties, but, you know, doing an upstream prevention type of initiative, so that we can get those resources to the service member before they get out, so they don't end up having these barriers that I have had, and others in the Coalition have had, so that they can transition into a career or into a volunteer type of situation after their service. Next page, or next slide, please. We'd like to formalize our collaboration with Penale County, and we drafted a letter with Joel to announce it. Each of you gentlemen will get a chance to read that in full following this meeting today, and we would encourage any questions, any feedback. Once you have read that, we will do another meeting and answer any of those questions at a later date. I'm really excited, this is, as I said, a very long time, a long process, working with Joel to collaborate and figure out, as I said, the right resource at the right time. And there's just so many different puzzle pieces when you're looking at Penale County that we really want to get right, and we're excited to offer all that we have in regards to support for different levels, volunteerism, economic development, bringing in obviously those veterans and their families, but also partnering with the existing veterans and the businesses here and the faith community. And I always say and, 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 as you guys saw that wheel, there's so many areas of support, and we're really excited to further, you know, collaborate and utilize the resources at Be Connected to connect with Penale County. Do you have any questions? I know there was a lot in a really short amount of time, so.
Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I heard you say something about barriers to employment. What would you say the top two or three barriers to employment are for veterans?
Sure. Thank you so much, sir, for that, and that's a great question. The barriers, the top barriers we see in Arizona for veterans that are leaving is a kind of a, you've got those who are retiring and they're overqualified, and they want a second career. A lot of our veterans, our service members are transitioning, they have young children, they have started having a family later in life. The veterans of this era are very different than the ones 20 years ago. We see a lot more looking for a second career. We see a lot more veterans who are not looking to be a greeter at Walmart, and I always use that, you know, as a funny little anecdote. That used to be 20 years ago, the Veterans Day, when they got out, the majority wanted just something where they could relax. We have about, I would say, 1% or 2% that really want to relax, that were in really high-profile, you know, the camp commanders and things like that. But even the chiefs, you know, they're around people every day. We see chiefs looking to be directors and higher in level, looking for government positions within city, county, and state agencies. So we've got a huge push for that, but unfortunately, the barrier, you're wondering, you know, where is the barrier in that, is those who are not veterans or veterans of older eras, they're not sure or understanding if they can transition those skills, and if you look at those skills that they might have, if they can accept them into the government agency or into the city and county agencies, right? So just, I guess, the biggest barrier is translating those very, I would call them soft skills, into those positions. And then on the other side of the coin, right, you've got the junior enlisted, and you've got the guard and reserve. And so then you see a lack of the skills, and then inability to find a good spot for them where they can provide for the family. So the cost of living, as we all know, is rising and rising, and then if you've got the junior enlisted without the skills, and then you've got the senior enlisted, or, you know, in the officer world, you've got all these skills, but they're overqualified. And so the minimum wage jobs are saying, no, 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 or even just the entry level, they're saying, no, you can't start here at the bottom and learn, and those directors at the top are saying, you can't be a director yet, you need to start. So it's, it's kind of, they get stuck in the middle. I experienced the same thing. I was overqualified for many jobs in the $40,000 and $50,000 range, which was pretty average, you know, for a service member exiting the military with my rank, but it was very, a huge barrier to explain. So the Coalition really works with the military member, and then those employers, we train the employers, what to expect from this member and what they can actually do in translation of those skills. I hope that answered your question. I know it's very long-winded, but it's very.
I appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Anyone else have any questions? No. Thank you for taking on projects like this and working on this. It's a, it's a real need, and we don't do enough for our military people. I can just, I'll just say that right out. So everything that's done is, is well, is appreciated.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your guys' time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bring this to item number four, which is a work session, presentation. Caroline Oberholzer? Is that correct? Did I get it even close?
Chairman Miller, Board of Supervisors. Lester Chow, Community Development Director. Today, we have Carolyn Oberholzer and Matt Kleitsko with Michael Baker to do a work session on zoning and code up things for you. So up first, I have Carolyn Oberholzer.
Thanks, Lester, and happy holidays to you all, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Again, Carolyn Oberholzer, Bergen Frakes, Smalley, and Oberholzer. And I am not here on behalf of anyone today. I usually tell you who I'm here on behalf of, and just here for a fun little work session today to talk about zoning basics. Zoning 101, really, this is meant to be a dialogue, much less a presentation, but a conversation, and I'll cover what is zoning, why do we zone, and if you don't like your zoning, how do you go about changing that? And then Matt will cover if you don't like your code, how do you go about changing that? And you can also like your code and want to change it and make it better. So it's not about like or dislike, but something's not working for you, so what do we have to do to make adjustments along the way when we find out we have something that doesn't work? So with that, I'll start, do I advance the slides? I can't remember with this. Okay, perfect. So just the first, what is zoning? For a property owner, it's what can I do and where on my property, as basic as that. And because what your property value is attributed to is what you can do on your property and where, there's a direct tie to zoning and property enhancement or not. And so in law school, they teach you about property rights in terms of a bundle of sticks. You get a bundle of sticks of rights when you buy a property, and in zoning, they can take away some of your sticks, or you can add some sticks. And also, what happens on your neighbor's property might impact your sticks in the form of easements and in the form of rezonings. So although zoning fundamentally is about that particular property and that owner's rights related to that property, it also does impact the properties and the community around it. So for that reason, the government has a role in zoning, and that's urban planning. And so when a property owner has something on their property that isn't working for them in terms of what they want to do and what the zoning allows, the county's role, the government's role in all the jurisdictions in Arizona is, let's have a big look at what this change would do in terms of character, in terms of infrastructure, in terms of resources, be that open space corridors, or impacts to water, and it takes a bigger look beyond just the property itself, that the property zoning is being requested for a change. And so in that way, zoning does have a trickle-down impact, because you're looking at it first on that micro level of what's happening on this property, but then if we change that, what happens on all the other properties? And now in a county, a lot of the property in the county is zoned in a general rural zoning category, which was meant in the counties to be a starter zone, not a forever zone, because as areas urbanize, you understand that these are placeholder categories, and eventually things are going to change, and that's why we have the comprehensive plan tool. So it's not zoning. It's your master plan document that is the guidebook for how should we look at future zoning cases? So it's also a very important document in the role of any rezoning request, because if you have to change something on your property, you've got to look to the comp plan first. So as the legislative body of the county, by statute, you guys are the ones that bless, approve, deny, modify all zoning cases. And you are also the masters of the comprehensive plan, which applies to the county as a whole and is by statute supposed to be updated every 10 years. And so in that comprehensive plan, you're setting out the goals for future land use changes, and if you have to rezone a property by statute, you have to prove that you are conforming first to the comprehensive plan. So if you're not rezoning a property, the comprehensive plan does not come into play specifically by statute. You might have other codes that say that you want to have the plan be considered for certain other changes, but by statute, you cannot have discretion to approve a rezoning if it is not in general conformance with the land uses densities and intensities identified for the property in the comprehensive plan. Any questions? I see thinking. Okay. So now we're at zoning. What types of zoning actions is the county as a whole involved in? The Board of Supervisors, again, decides all rezoning cases, and there are types of rezoning cases. You can have just, I want to change from one category to another. You can approve conditional zoning. Conditional zoning is, we want to add a stipulation to the case that requires a development schedule, and if you achieve that development schedule, then you have met the condition, and then you have your rezoning. A common, you know, old mistake that was made was, well, we can sunset zoning. We can say, if you haven't met this obligation in five years, then that zoning goes away. And you can't do that. You have to change zoning only by the statutory process, which I'll go into in a minute, but the conditional zoning is simply creating a development schedule that if you miss that schedule, you come back to, you can get called back for a rehearing and justification and extension or deletion of the stipulation. But that's really the all that comes into play in a conditional zoning. Then the other type of zoning is the overlay, and the county has the overlay process in the form of the PAD. That's the most common tool, but there are others, where you are setting out in your code specific parameters for when and how you can alter the specific regulations under the underlying zoning district. But that has limits, and I'll go into that in a minute as well. So those are your three basic zoning case types. Then there is a use permit, which isn't actually a rezoning, but it is a special extra layer of a zoning approval that comes through you guys, Planning Commission and the Board, where the code says, you can do these uses in these categories, but only if you meet these certain conditions. And the use permit conditions are, you know, you're looking at traffic, adverse impacts to the area, and then some uses have performance conditions. Like you can do a use permit for this type of use, but only if it's 100 acres or more. Some of the very common restrictions are on, for, in certain categories, if you have a high-traffic use permit, you might say that you can apply for this use permit for this industrial use in this industrial category if you have direct access to an arterial, or you're within a certain distance of a freeway corridor. So you can add some property requirements that apply countywide, and then you have to come in and justify that you meet those requirements and the use permit test, which, again, looks to what's happening in this surrounding area as an impact. But it's a good tool, because it's a tweener, where you can see that this use is a good use in certain categories, but you don't want it to be by right allowed for anyone who has that zoning. And so it's this other process that you can offer people to go through, where when the notices go out to the community, it's not this earth-shattering, you're going from, you know, C2 to I2, and that's commercial to industrial, and that's going to cause everybody heartburn, and instead they get a use permit notice where, I'm not changing all the C2 stuff here, we're just adding the use permit to allow for a car wash in this location, because a car wash is a use that generates extra trips, has specific considerations that we want to attach to it. So those are the types of ways that the use permit is used. Also, for a lot in the marijuana, the medical, now formerly medical, just the marijuana context, there's a whole variety of uses where that use permit tool can, can be handy. And then there's the variance, which you guys have absolutely no role in. And the variance is the purview of the Board of Adjustment, and it is a legal process. So when you guys are sitting at the dais in the capacity of the Board of Supervisors, So when you guys are sitting at the dais in the capacity of the Board of Supervisors hearing rezoning cases, the applicant can come speak with you and talk to you about the case. The neighbors, you might hear from them, and you can have dialogues and meetings with people about this case. In the Board of Adjustment, they're sitting as almost judges. It's called quasi-judicial. You are not allowed to lobby them. The applicants cannot speak to the Board before the case, and that's because the variance is a legal test. And that's what they hear is, I've got some specific hardship that if you don't give me relief from this code provision, I am going to basically not be able to use my property like my neighbors can for a reason that I didn't cause. And there's a lot of those reasons. And we don't love variance cases, because they can be very difficult. You have to prove that you have a peculiar condition that caused this hardship. But that is in the context of, I've got a setback that I need an adjustment from, because somebody else built something too close to my property, and I didn't have a say in it, and now I can't meet distance requirements because of it. Or there's a universe of options here, but you guys set up the code that talks through the variance process. But it's a creature of statute, so there's only so much discretion you have to say when and how variances are created. But if you find that you have a lot of variance requests coming in on similar topics, that's a good indication that maybe you want to look at the code to see, you know, did we mean to have this impact with these types of restrictions? Questions? Okay, keep going. So we'll just take each type of zoning case now. Just the garden variety just picked a square on the screen and called it up, and it was I3. And you can see around it that this property is kind of in an I3 island. I'm not sure whose property it is or why it's I3, probably some landfill or other large-scale use. But that is an example of, I just have I3 zoning, and I look to the code, and I see that whatever it says I can do in I3, that's what I can do on this property. But then if something is an issue, let's say I3 only allows a 46-foot building height, and in order to do everything inside and make it better for the community, I need a 60-foot building height, because I'm bringing all of this mechanical stuff indoors, and I need 60 feet of building height to do it. But the zoning code only allows me 48-foot height limit or 46 feet, whatever it might be. So then, your tools are limited to the overlay. And what types of overlays do you have available in the code that allows you to go through a process to rezone it effectively, but change the rules for that particular district for that particular property? And the most common way we do that is a PAD. But the PAD is really geared towards residential development. And it works well. You've got to guess right at your underlying zoning categories, and that's what makes it tricky. You have the ability to amend development standards and to take away uses in the PAD, which also is a nice tool for when you want to change the rules, but people are nervous about certain elements of that zoning category. And so to allay those concerns, you can delete uses, you can alter development standards, you can increase them. If you're decreasing some, it's a balance, it's a give-take. That's a lot of, the public process that happens in these cases is figuring out what is the right give-take. We try to think of, as applicants, all the things that people could say about something and give the best effort at that application to address all the concerns. But always, when we're going through this, staff will bring up issues that we have to address, and the community, and you guys. And so the PAD is a nice tool to be able to negotiate things. If you're asking for relief on something, you're giving on somewhere else. So it's a good tool, but it's limited to application to existing zoning districts. So what do you do if you have an industrial use or I2, and you have one use in I3 that you'd really love to add? I3 is too scary. You don't need to rezone it to all those uses. You just need to add that one use in I3. How do you do that? And you, that's where, we don't really have the PAD tool to use, because you have to use your underlying zoning district, and you have to pick and choose from the uses that are allowed in that zoning district. You can't grab uses from other districts that aren't otherwise allowed in that district. So that's where this tool has some limits. And we've been talking in this group about other zoning districts that you can create to give you more flexibility there, where you're actually changing an underlying zoning, you're writing your own zoning standards for that district. And you would do that where potentially this overlay scenario just doesn't work. But you can solve the problem I talked to you about originally, which is that height. You can increase the height beyond what is allowed in that district in an overlay. You just can't grab the other uses from the outside. So, oops, wrong guy. So the process, which is what I do all the time, before we get here, where I've been before we arrive here, is, number one, there are two ways to initiate a zoning case, through the Planning Commission, your Planning Commission can initiate them, or landowner. And by statute, whoever initiates a zoning case, you have to send notice to the folks that reside or own property, not reside, but own property, within 300 feet. But the statute also requires that in creating a rezoning process, the county must adopt a public participation section. And so most counties, most cities require a different layer of, you might have to do a neighborhood meeting if we say you have to. Some jurisdictions require a neighborhood meeting regardless of the level of interest. The Pinal County is one such place, where every single case comes with the requirement to hold a neighborhood meeting. In Maricopa County, just by contrast, we send notices out there, and you're not required to have a neighborhood meeting unless in your citizen participation plan that the applicant prepares, we oftentimes will say, if people are calling and are concerned, we'll have a neighborhood meeting. So it's a little bit more loose there. So it's just, and it's different everywhere. So one way or the other isn't right or wrong, it's just how you are implementing the statute requirement, which is that you've also got to establish some public process. So that's where the county leans on the neighborhood meeting as a tool. So first, you know, we hold a neighborhood meeting, and before it can ever go to the Planning Commission. When we're done with our staff review and our neighborhood meeting, and we're at Planning Commission, the Planning Commission has to make a recommendation in order for us to get to the Board of Supervisors. So if a Planning Commission is at an impasse, continuances, there is no statutory bypass around them. So we do need to work closely with the Planning Commission to make sure that we're dealing with the concerns or we're working through the issues, and if we can't, moving on, so that we can come to the Board of Supervisors, where you will ultimately make a decision. But the Planning Commission is your gatekeeper. And then, once you do make a decision on a case, it is not effective for 30 days. And that's because every zoning case, doesn't matter if it's a county or a city, is subject to a 30-day waiting period to allow for the possibility of a referendum petition to be filed. So you cannot, a citizen group could not do an initiative to rezone someone else's property, but the referendum process is available if the county were to make a decision and a citizens group wanted to send it to the ballot. It is an option that does rarely occur, and even more rare in counties, where it's very difficult to get the number of signatures on a county-wide basis. It's not on a district basis, it's on the full county-wide basis. So when it is an applicant-driven process, if it's Planning Commission-initiated, it just gets managed by staff. When it's applicant-initiated, you first start with a pre-application meeting. And that's common, that is not a statutory requirement, but it's common to literally every jurisdiction I work in. And that's, it's very helpful. It can be kind of annoying if you're doing something really simple, because it's just another step. But it's also very helpful, because it's the chance for the county staff to say, you're right, you, based on what you're telling me you want to do, you do need to have a rezoning. Or here's another option. And when you do that, here are some considerations that you're going to need to address, or you're going to need to deal with traffic, or you're going to need to prove up your, how you're going to get your public services to the site. And they give you, it's the heads-up meeting. A lot of cases, you know, die after that. And you're, I'm sure your planning staff has a statistic somewhere about how many cases actually go from pre-application to submittal. But there's a fair amount of cases probably that people realize, oh, this is a way bigger deal than I thought it was, or I'm not going to be able to, you know, meet that hurdle, and so they go away. And I've been, I'm in that boat, where I will tell a client after a meeting sometimes, like, that seems like a really steep hill to climb, and we're all going to make a decision on whether we climb it. Sometimes we come and talk to you when we've had a meeting like that, just to say, hey, before we ride off into the sunset on this idea, how you feel? So it's not as though it's a dead end, whereas at a variance, I can't come talk to anybody about it. It's just, we just go for the hearing and make the legal case and see what happens. In this zoning process, it's nice that it's iterative, and we get to have these conversations throughout as we're making these decisions.
Carolyn?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't want to slow you down on your presentation, but what you're really talking about there is the process. And that is the one I get the most complaints about. And so I don't know who wants to get into that and when in this presentation, but I think that's one of the things that we, that I really want to talk about. And you've just brought up a question, and you don't have to answer it right now, if you're going to answer it later. But when would a staff-initiated rezoning on a piece of property? Because we only have 19% of the property in Pinal County is privately owned, and I can't, I really think it'd be difficult for us to go and say, hey, we're going to rezone your piece of property, Mr. Smith, or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, so I, now, I understand, maybe we amend the comprehensive plan, that's a little bit different scenario, I kind of get that. But what would be a scenario that we would decide to rezone somebody's property?
Well, so, Mr. Chairman, it's a great question.
And you can't, you can't, we can't go zone state land, so.
Right.
So anyway, that's where I'm going.
Well, and that's a, that's a different, that's a very unique animal, because most property owners don't have a right to tell you that you can't with authority. Zoning is discretionary. So we are never, I'm always explaining to clients, you call them entitlements, but you're not entitled to them. You're entitled to what you have, not what you want. And so when we're running entitlement cases, we're running applications to get what we want, but you don't have to give it to us. It's discretionary. And so the, in the state land context, it's very different, because the commissioner ultimately decides whether or not something can be done on state trust land. They're the only ones with that type of authority. The regular landowner, you know, until Prop 207 was enacted about a decade ago, a county could go in and just downzone your property, and you had a hearing, right? You would have to give notice. But if, if there was a problem property, and this happened a lot in the downturn, code enforcement issues, I'm not saying it happened here, it's something I dealt with a lot in Maricopa County, there would be actions to change the zoning, eliminate entitlements for repeat offenders. But with 207, and I will touch on that a little bit before I turn over to Matt, 207 changed that, because now if you change somebody else's property, you potentially, as a county, are liable for any diminution in value that results between the land use regulation that they had and the land use regulation that you gave them, changed for them. And that's why in all these cases, the applicant always has to sign a 207 waiver, saying, when I'm asking you to change it for me, I promise I won't sue you for asking, for agreeing with what I'm asking for. But that Prop 207 now really protects people from the county coming in, and it hamstrings your ability to do broad overlays. Like, if you wanted to change the character of an area by, you wanted to enhance it, you wanted to say, hey, everybody, in this, in this area of the county, 600 square miles or whatever it is, we're going to do an overlay, and it's going to be the, you can add more houses without coming to us overlay, which is a thing. A lot of cities in the affordable housing crisis are considering whether or not, are we just going to allow two homes on every lot going forward? We have single-family, and typically, you can do a guest house, but you're limited in, you can't do cooking facilities in a guest house, or you become a two-family lot. So a lot of cities around the country are looking at this issue and saying, how can we help people afford to live in our cities? And so in this area, you can now do two houses per lot. Well, in Arizona, under 207, if we were to do something like that, you would want to have a lot of conversations with your county attorney, and you might weigh the risks and decide that you want to do those things. And certainly, some cities have in our state, Flagstaff has done a lot of that. But you're limited in changing the rules for other people's properties now in a way that it really isn't common practice anymore. So your original question is, why would the Planning Commission, why would we do this? There's a lot of reasons. But you would have to really carefully consider the full scope of that because of 207, which is unique to Arizona.
No, that's what I was thinking.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll talk about that process later. Supervisor Goodman?
Thank you. And I guess that, boy, that really complicates this even more for some of the things that I'm, that I think all of us have challenges in our own districts. And one of them is, a lot of areas, you know, in my district, I have a couple of big locations that are mini-farms.
Mm-hmm.
And over the years, certain individuals have started businesses within those mini-farms and have, and we see some of these code violations that are going on. The dilemma that we have is the very restrictive, especially in the Santa Ana Valley area, the amount of commercial property that's out there and the cost of that commercial property. And some of these beginning businesses, they buy into these locations, thinking that they can start their little small businesses, home-based businesses, and, but then they grow to a certain level. And so one of the things that we were talking about was pulling together a community meeting and seeing what we can do to make some adjustments. But based on what you just said, with Prop 207, we could be.
A good way to solve that problem, so I'm only using Maricopa County as an example a lot, because those, your county and that county are the two counties I do the most work in. So in Maricopa County, they have a huge list of uses that you can do in any district with a special use permit. And so the, again, the use permit tool kind of gets you around the 207 issues potentially. Again, always defer to your county attorney. This is not legal advice for the county, but just from a, what's a 207 concern, and certainly a rezoning and changing what you can do on a property, you, the county, your role in a use permit could allow, in certain circumstances, if they prove up the right justifications, you could approve a certain set of uses in any district. And you can be pretty flexible with it. And so that might be something to look at, because then you still have an applicant-driven process. They still have to come and ask for permission to expand to that level, to be, to emerge from home-based and become something else. But in that context, you might, might be the context where you want to set up a framework. If you're going to make an application for that, you have to have a certain acreage, you know, minimum acreage five. Or, you know, there are, there are so many things you can do to tailor it, so that you can create a process for your community that allows that urbanization or that increase, but it's not by right. It's not every time, it's tailored on a property-by-property basis.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and we do a lot of that, right? People call us and say, I bought in the county, I can do whatever I want, they don't have any rules. I'm like, yeah, that's so not true. They have to, by statute, you know, right? You guys hear it too, I'm sure. And so I have to send a lot of people away, because they tell me they want to do something, you know, that's just completely not at all what your code allows, and they're disappointed, you know, but, but they have their bundle of sticks. And I always assure them that the bundle of sticks you bought, that should still be the bundle of sticks you have today. So it's not like you lost something, unless there's a context of like an approval that expires like a site plan or a building permit, which we're not talking about today, we're just staying in zoning, staying in this lane. But the, going back to the process question, so that's, that's really where we are right now, is this process. And what I was saying is that you guys require a neighborhood meeting. Not every county does that. You guys are very, you want to make sure that your citizens You guys are very, you want to make sure that your citizens are communicated with early in a process. They aren't waiting around 15 days before a public hearing to find out about a case because that's what the statute requires, that that 300-foot notice goes out to the community 15 days prior to a public hearing. Whereas the citizen review process in Pinal County requires that you have a neighborhood meeting before you ever get to a public hearing. So we are very committed to that early process with neighboring property owners here. So that's a precursor to getting scheduled for planning commission. So after that pre-application meeting where we decide, okay, you gave us the heads up on all these things, we still want to go, we want to do this, we're preparing the application, we've got that pretty much ready, it's between that time and after submittal where we will then send out the notice for the neighborhood meeting. I think the county rule is that it has to be at least 10 days prior to the community meeting. And that's the opportunity for that early feedback. And staff cares about that feedback as we're working through the comments because when we submit to staff, we will get comments from them as well. And we're working through engineering issues that can, you know, that's a lot of it, how we're handling drainage and roads and the comparison of, you've proposed this use and now you're going to this use, it's a more intense use from a traffic standpoint. Now we're looking at what road improvements need to be triggered with that and the timing of those things. And so that can be a protracted process as you figure those things out. You might find, oh, no, that means I've got to go get right of way from somebody and that's not my property and that's an issue. There's a host of things that can come up during that back and forth. And that's why sometimes it takes us a while to get here. You might see a case that was filed a year and a half ago and wonder, what the heck did you guys do for 18 months?
Carolyn, this is where I want to, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this is where.
Feel free. This is the dialogue part.
This is, this is where everything crashes and burns. Because in that submittal, if I have a piece of land and I go, it's GR, and I want to make it an industrial and I'll, you know, pick one, I don't care which one it is, C3, C1, whatever, I want to zone it for that because it's next to a railroad, it's, it's, in my general, in the general plan, it shows it as employment, you know, that type of uses, what we visioned was going to be there anyway. Now they're saying, well, I need you to, you know, I need a traffic study, I need a drainage report, I need this. I don't know what this piece parcel, this parcel is going to look like until I have a user. I want to sell it as zoned and I will bring you all that information when I either sell a person 20 acres or 15 acres or 50 acres, whatever they decide they need, then we'll do the site plan, then we'll submit all of that information. I just need the zoning today.
Mm-hmm.
All I need is the zoning right now. That's where, that's where this stuff gets hung up. And I know other governmental jurisdictions allow that process to be in that, in that order. So I want to know why we don't do it that, in other words, why don't we give a little more flexibility on the front end in the beginning, get the zoning, and then when somebody is going to do a project on that land and they know when they zone it, all the allowed uses, you know? Okay, if I got a little something that's, I want to take, now I might need to go to the PAD because I got something that just didn't fall right in the zoning, but we can do that. You know, I don't know, it just seems like that would be user-friendly, I guess, for lack of a better word. And that's where, I mean, I don't know what kind of use I'm going to be, I don't know where they're going to put their driveways, I don't know where they're going to, you know, where they want to bring their power in because I haven't sold anybody any land. I just need that, I need the buyers to know that it's zoned properly.
So in this scenario, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. You said it's employment.
I said it's, yeah.
Right. And so because of that, there's an element of analysis that has gone into the county's circulation and the master streets plan. And you're probably looking at whatever roads are nearby to that employment and they're probably arterials.
Could be.
Major arterials. And so in that context, that might be a really good case for being flexible. Because you're, if you're zoning it to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and that infrastructure analysis has been done to a degree, then that's the kind of thing where you can kick the specific level of detail down the road. There's nothing statutorily that requires that you do that. Your statutory process is pretty basic in the, in the things you have to do in order to ask for a rezoning. All the stuff in between is completely up to you guys and staff as policymakers to say when you want to encourage flexibility, when certain dynamics are the case, or when you want to make sure there is those upfront answers. And, and those zoning cases are always very hard where you don't know who the end user is going to be because it's so much easier when you do because you can do a traffic.
But why? Why is it, why is it so hard? I mean.
Well, right.
It's not.
It can be really hard. It can kill a project if you, if you, if you have to do a traffic study for, if you don't know who your end user is going to be and you have to do a traffic study to account for like the worst-case scenario in I-2, whatever category it is. And, but, but at the end of the day, that traffic study only matters if, when you come in for site plan, that is the use selected. So you're kind of planning for worst-case scenarios in that pre-zoning context and.
That's horrible. That's horrible planning. I mean, seriously. I mean, what, you're going to set everything up so that, you know, well, you're going to need an eight-lane road out here, you know, in front of this place because that's, that's the type of traffic, I mean, you don't know that's going to be the kind of, and all of that stuff will be addressed when you do have a user that comes to you and, and they'll make that decision. They do the traffic study and all of a sudden, holy cow, this site's not going to work for us. Unfortunately, I'm not going to buy your property, you know, but those, those things can be worked out going forward. It's already zoned and you don't have to worry about that process. I just.
That's, and that's also when, you know, the question of why would we want to rezone property without the owner? Well, a lot of times, that, that kind of implies that the owner is not supportive of it. Well, a lot of times the owner just doesn't have the wherewithal or you're trying to show an economic development, proactive economic development reason for, we'll, we'll tackle zoning your property. And so there is the ability to help certain situations along by initiating it and having it be a county-run process. But at the end of the day, what that process is, if it's not required by statute, that's where your code, you can, you can create that flexibility in that situation to, to provide for reduced requirements. And, and frankly, that, that pre-application meeting, a lot of times what happens in that meeting is staff's telling you, you need a drainage study, you need engineering.
Drainage report, you need traffic.
Right. And then you say, well, what about this instead? And staff says, oh, you're right, cross out that comment. And then sometimes you ask a question, says, shouldn't I do this? And staff says, well, you can now, but why don't you wait till site plan when we know those things? I mean, there is this back and forth where, your code right now, I don't know per category, there are very few categories that actually require specific studies to be accompanying an application. It's, it's very much.
I, no, well, I don't know. And I don't, I want to get down in the weeds of our operation here, but I had a gentleman put in an application because he wanted a permit or he wanted, yeah, all he wants is a meter installed and they asked him for a drainage report and a traffic study. And this is on a building that had a meter on it six months ago. It isn't like this is, it's just, why do I have to go now? I, I got to go get a traffic study to get, get electric meter on a facility that's already been in operation for years? I, I don't, I mean, I don't want to get down in the weeds, but those are the kinds of things that, that really drive people away.
And those are the kind of processes that you can establish, like a lot of codes have a couple of things. One, minor modification process or administrative relief where you can go just to staff and justify whatever the 10% deviation is, its height, its lot coverage, its some metric parking spaces.
Right.
And you set up your code to where you can just apply to staff for an administrative modification of that standard. And that's one way you handle some things, it's also an option. But in terms of the, you know, when certain things are required, typically, you know, in the development code, you can also write in when they're not required. You can say, if you're going to disturb less than X square feet, these things are not required by code. Now, that doesn't mean that there aren't scenarios where you're going to ask for it anyway, but you can, you can establish those things. And again, I think you're probably, your building code probably has that where you don't, you don't need a building permit if you're under a certain square footage and you don't have electrical. You, you know, there, there is definitely a universe of you don't need it when's that you can add to.
Right. I, I agree. I don't know all of those scenarios.
And that's, but that's, yeah.
That, we need to focus on that for a while because I think that there's, there needs to be more flexibility in, in some of these, you know, scenarios.
And this board has done, you know, a lot of regulatory reform in the past. Like I recall, you know, you guys had, I can't remember if it was the tentative plats that were only good for two years and then we had to come back for extensions. And one year in the recession, there was a resolution and you guys just said, for anything that's valid today, it's another two years.
We did.
You know, there are ways also to suspend your rules and to make sweeping changes on, on those process bases. As long as you're not changing the zoning, that's more subdivision process. And, and where people get tripped up in a lot of engineering stuff is a lot of that like subdivision development code stuff, less so in the zoning portions of the code.
Correct.
So it seems like you've got your process analysis, you know, on the one hand, it's what do you have to do to change your zoning? But there's that whole other universe of, I don't need the change of zoning, I just need this permit and how can we make that process easier?
And typically those subdivisions are PAD amendments, you know? More than likely, it was a PAD.
Yep.
And we're just, we're amending our PAD because we want to move something around. And we're, you know, I think we're pretty good with that type of stuff.
Yeah.
It's, it's really more when you get to the commercial and the industrial and, and clear back to your comment where maybe it's an economic development thing, we went to the owner and said, hey, we'd like to rezone your piece of property, I bet we have him sign one of those 207 waivers at the same time.
Oh, you bet, yes. I'm sure your county attorney would want that.
So, that is, you know, we're working in conjunction with that individual.
Yes.
You know, they, they don't have the wherewithal to do a traffic study and a drainage study and all those types of things at, at that time. But we see it as a key, a part of the puzzle.
Well, and the key is that there are, you know, there are, I'll get into the limits a little bit, just touch on them so you know that they're there. But for the most part, you guys have a lot of control to, to establish your policy, to be whatever you want it to be in the zoning. It's just really hard, that process, which Matt's going to talk you through, you know, that also has its own statutory requirements of how you change the code. And so the key is that there is public involvement the whole way by statute. And so because of these timelines, you can only move so fast because some of these things, you know, that 30 days at the back end, the 15 days prior to each public hearing, you can't do anything about those timeframes. So you can only accelerate it so fast. Just about the fastest zoning case in the history of my career was 90 days.
Right.
And that was crazy and I doubt I'll ever touch it again. But 90 days, it can be done.
Statutorily, there's requirements.
Yes.
And I understand that. I don't really have a problem with those types of things. It's when we get way outside, way outside that 90 days, which is 180 or something bigger and you're like, how, you know, no one, you know, time is money.
Yeah.
And when people are, are trying to make decisions and move things along, that's what they're facing.
Yeah. And in your codes, you can create that flexibility. If you're finding, you know, that people keep hitting a wall, you can reconstruct the wall.
Okay. Supervisor Goodman?
And if I'm not, if I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, Mr. Chair, sounds like some of the frustrations and things that you're having is more internal decisions.
Well.
From what, as I'm sitting here listening to this, it's more internal that we need to be working with our staff and.
Well, and I understand it, if I may, I understand it to be the process that we have laid out. And I think those processes and those steps need to be looked at. I, you're right, it's probably a little bit more, because I go back to the idea of statutorily, how quick can I do this job, you know, and meet all the statutory requirements? Like you said, you did one in 90 days. That's reasonable for me, but, you know, and, and again, I think it's the process. And I understand that a zoning thing might be, we'll hear it and we'll vote on the zone. Well, when they come back with a site plan, we'll have to vote on the site plan maybe, maybe not, I don't know, I, I really wonder about that. But okay, that's our job. That's our job. Okay, so you, you know, this, this piece of land comes back to us with a new project on it now, but the zoning is already done and then they will address.
And that's where the discretion comes out of it, kind of.
Yeah.
Because the zoning decision is discretionary, but then, once you have your zoning and you're submitting for a site plan approval, the typical scenario is that those are administratively, that's a staff level. Because staff's looking at it from, okay, do you meet all the zoning requirements? Check. Do you meet all of the other engineering requirements in the codes?
Codes, I mean, yeah.
Yes.
It's in the codes.
Right.
You know, and I, I mean, I, I break down zoning to something, maybe, maybe I'm trying to be too simple. Is this the proper use in this location?
Mm-hmm.
Use and location, those, that's what we should be, that's what we should be looking at. And so anyway, I digress, maybe, I don't know.
So, Mr. Chair, if I, if I might continue on that.
Yeah.
You said something about in regards to building permit. I mean, I'm looking to put a hay barn that's not going to require electricity or anything of that nature at my hay barn. And so, but yet I think our, in fact, I know we require a building permit in order for me to build it.
Not if it's ag.
That's a very good point. Five commercial, yeah, if you've got five acres, commercial farm, ag, that is, and I would get, that's in my list of just things to know is, there are limits on your ability to regulate ag land.
Well, I have.
In agricultural production.
And I've never known, I don't know anybody that can commercially farm on five acres anyway, so, unless, unless they're a lot better farmer than I've ever been, so.
Yeah, I haven't seen, I've never seen a five-acre farm either.
Unless it's a reptile farm or something like that.
Right.
Marijuana. Marijuana, there you go.
That's true.
You've got the wrong cash crop.
I'm doing it wrong apparently. But back to, back to my, my point is that maybe, and that's probably an internal decision that we can do based on what you just said on these type of, of building permit, like a hay barn.
Yeah, some things, again, are zoning, meaning what are those uses? Where can you put them in general? But the specifics of, the county absolutely by statute regulates building permits.
Okay.
And the requirement to get a building permit. But it doesn't say, and here are the scenarios that you're limited to. It's, it's very much in your power to carve out exceptions and establish framework for when it isn't required.
Okay, thank you.
So we are still in our process conversation, but I'm, I'm transitioning. Well, I think what you guys have naturally done in this is transition to the, okay, now, where do we make changes? How do we make changes? And that's Matt's portion of the presentation. So I think what I'll do, I mean, the, the bottom line and the process is this back and forth, the why, what's required. There is a lot of flexibility there, again, and there's a lot of reasons things get held up. But once we do clear those hurdles and we have a recommendation from staff, meaning we've all, we've submitted all the things we had to, they've reviewed it all, and now they're saying we've supported or not to planning commission, now we're off to our process where we've transitioned to that application set to now, the decisions are going to be made by the bodies. And so when we're in that planning commission process, that's when the public engages again. And, you know, we can get hung up there with continuances because you hear a concern and you see that you don't have support unless you address the concern and we want to make sure, we try to do that. So you want extra time. Sometimes you ask for a continuance and people don't want to give it to you and you're moving through the process anyway. So it's, that's, the public hearing takes on a whole nother dynamic in terms of requirements and what's discretionary. And so that's, I think, you know, another thing to focus on when you're looking at recommendations that come through is, why is something recommended for approval or not? Because your professional staff has reviewed it and come up with their own ideas about that. Your planning commission grinded on it for a day and, you know, now you've got two groups to look at and you make your own call on. to look at and you make your own call on it. And maybe you want to have meetings and you want to continue it for other reasons. Or maybe you just want it to sail through lightning fast and, because it's all dyed up in a bow and you don't even want to talk about it and you just approve it. There's not a whole lot that has to happen at that public hearing. Just got to open the public hearing, hear the public if they want to talk about it, close it, and make a decision. So, except, there are areas where you are limited. And so, I just, I'm just going to like blow through this, not get into them in detail again. Your county attorney is very well-versed in all of these areas. But some things are constitutionally protected, so you're limited in how you can say, "You can't do a church, you can't do a school." You can, you can't require affordable housing as part of a project. You can incentivize affordable housing. There's that agricultural exemption for five acres or more. You cannot dictate those land uses. Obviously, you guys know about marijuana. We haven't talked about signs. There's a lot of tension on sign cases because there was a recent Arizona Supreme Court, not Arizona, but Arizona case from Gilbert that went to the U.S. Supreme Court that created some new restrictions on time, place, and manner, restrictions on signage, so how you can regulate signs. And short-term rentals are a big topic and the legislature's gotten involved on limiting when and how jurisdictions can regulate short-term rentals. There's also an area of the law, non-conforming use rights, where you're grandfathered, you built something under an old code and now you want to change that. You're limited in your ability to change that. But also, the county before 207 was limited in requiring you to become conforming. After 207, it made that less at the forefront and now it's more about whether or not the county's changing a rule that impacts what you could do before in a way that diminishes, diminishes the value of the property. So that's a good transition to the code change because now, any code change that you are looking at, it does have to be with that lens and the lens on of, there are certain areas where you have to be careful in where you make changes. So with that, I'm going to transition to Matt, but I'm going to be here the whole time for whatever else you guys want to talk about or if you want to talk about other things before we go to Matt.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I had a question.
Sure.
Earlier, Mrs. Oberholzer, you mentioned that the PAD is a tool to negotiate for the things perhaps the county wants. And the, and the problem I've seen is, it depends on who's negotiating from within the county. And the question I have is, you know, do we have mechanisms in place to make sure that the negotiations for one developer, large or small, are the same for the requirements that come out of the negotiation for the other? If I go to Garrett Chevrolet in Coolidge and negotiate on a new pickup truck, I have the ability to walk away from the table if I don't like the negotiation. The citizens, the applicants, don't have that here, so I'd like to make sure that we are, we are applying fair negotiations for some, with the citizens and applicants who can't walk away from the table here. That's a big concern that I've had.
Yep, absolutely.
Maybe a better word is consistent. That it's always, you know, we're not asking of somebody something different than we would somebody else.
Right.
But to, if I might, to supervisor, and again, I think that's an internal thing because I think there's, there is some inconsistency that I think we've all have seen that we probably need to do better at internally.
Well, the nice thing about being in a county and you being a district system is those citizens, that business owner, they've got you all at the end of the day. But they know, this property, Mr. Chairman, and your point, is this the right location? Is this the right use at that location? The five of you decide that. But if I have an issue that is in your district about something I want to change or an issue I'm having, they have that recourse of going to you. Whereas, in cities that are not district cities, it can be a little bit more difficult. You've got a seven-member council, people don't have their areas, and so you have to cover a lot of bases sometimes.
Right.
And so, the nice thing about this and in your individual offices that you hold, you are, you are ultimately who your people can go to if they do encounter those issues. But my job is when people can't figure it out on their own or it's too complex, I would, I see in a lot of county processes that there are applicant, property owner, and they're the same, driven applications where it is possible to manage your own zoning case as a property owner. But it is really no easier to do that here than anywhere else, again, because of those statutory requirements and the involvement you have to have. You have to send out the notices correctly. And there are these, it is a quasi-legal process, even though you certainly do not have to be a lawyer to, to be a zoning applicant. My partners are not zoning lawyers and they joke that I'm a land useless attorney because I don't actually, they don't think I actually practice law because I don't go to court. But it's, it is, there are pitfalls. And if you mess them up, you can't have your hearing date. And so, it is important to have representatives to get you through the process, whether they be a planning and engineering firm, a zoning firm, all of the above. It is difficult to manage any sort of complex zoning application without that kind of a team, just because of, again...
Just because of all the regulations.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
That have all been overlaid the process.
But there are certainly, you know, ways, like in infill areas and where you're trying to encourage redevelopment of businesses in older areas of town. A lot of jurisdictions will have like an ombudsman within the county government or the city government that were, they're the community services type of a person that can help, like be your applicant point through a project. And we have, I have often, you know, referred clients to those people, like, "You don't need me. They've got a great office set up to help property owners just like you in that redevelopment area." So that's also another service that the county can provide.
After I was a county supervisor for one year, I went to Greg Stanley and said, "I need an ombudsman for the planning and zoning and the whole development community," because there was tons of stuff out there that just, and he said, "That's a great idea, Steve, but we never got one." So, and I, I agree with that. I mean, because it is not just that simple and we should have a point of contact, somebody that kind of holds their hand through this process, gives them a heads up when something's not going correctly or something pops up that, you know, we didn't know that, you know, just whatever.
Well, and certain things, like, you know, in the, in the drainage context, right? Like, you can't just allow people to do whatever they want on their property.
No.
And to move dirt around, because that impacts your neighbor. There are, you know, that is a, that's a statutory nuisance law issue, but it also, you know, impacts zoning. And there's certainly a role for all of the engineering analysis. And I don't envy your staff or any other government staff in this state right now because it's never been so busy. And it is really hard to get everything right and get it done quickly. It's, you can do one of those things, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be right if it's done quickly. So, you know, it's not without pitfalls.
Okay, thank you.
Set it up nicely for you, Matt. Talk about all the problems, how to solve them.
Sending Matt into the arena now with the Lions.
All right, here we go. Thank you, Carolyn. Matt Kleisakow with Michael Baker International. Good to be back before you again. Just a little background, Michael Baker is a multidisciplinary firm, but our planning division here in Arizona only focuses on assisting public agencies with drafting zoning codes or navigating zoning codes. So I'm, in a nerdy way, happy to be here today to talk about amending the zoning code. And I think, you know, we heard from Carolyn about the legal application of the zoning code and then how we apply it to our built environment. But the next logical question is, is what happens if I want to amend the zoning code? And that is a very prudent question that any jurisdiction should be asking themselves because why? Because development changes, the economy changes, our laws change, whether that be state, federal, or county. And so, we really need to look at our zoning code as a living document, something that we have to constantly nurture to stay up with all of these changes. And so, as you can imagine, the state statute, as Carolyn mentioned, gives the authority to the Board of Supervisors to amend the zoning code. But, and there's always a but, there are specific steps and provisions that regulate who can make that request and how you go about it. So, on the slide here, we talk about the initiation or the application of a zoning regulation amendment. And that's how it's classified within the county's current Development Services Code. So some might call it a text amendment. But basically, to initiate that process, a property owner can do it or their representative. The other side is, the county can be the applicant, but the Planning and Zoning Commission has to initiate that process. So the commission, by their motion, can do it or uniquely within Pinell County, the Board of Supervisors can ask the Planning and Zoning Commission to make a motion to initiate it. Once that process is initiated, one of the first things, the broad kind of test that we need to look at is to make sure that the, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. So often, you'll see, sometimes with the text amendment, you might even get a Comprehensive Plan Amendment to go along with that because they recognize that, "Oh, we might not be consistent with this, so we're going to ask for a change to both." So it's pretty straightforward and I think, I'm sure, I know you're all pretty up to speed to that. So what I wanted to do is, with that understanding, discuss the specific steps involved of going through the public process to evaluate those requests. And as Carolyn mentioned, there are specific statutes that, that we must do and then there's other aspects that we could do. So what's, this is very similar to the previous slide in terms of a map amendment, but now we're talking about a zoning regulation or text amendment. And so, if an applicant or a property owner submits a text amendment, they typically, they'll be required to have a pre-application meeting. Now, we have to keep in mind, the unique aspect about a text amendment is, we're not looking at a sole property, right? We're looking at the entire code. So if someone's coming in to say, "I want to just amend this portion of the code," it's not just applying to them, it's applying to the county overall. So what's interesting is, we don't necessarily have a neighborhood citizen participation requirement. Now, the county, through good practice, does typically hold one when they're going through a text amendment process, but state statute and the county's code does not explicitly require a citizen participation neighborhood meeting like you saw in the zoning map amendment. So in this particular case, we'd have the pre-application meeting if it's owner-initiated. If it's not and it's the county initiates it, or basically, the Planning and Zoning Commission must have a public hearing to say, "We, the county, want to propose this text amendment." Then from there, it goes through kind of all the same process. You have the submittal, you evaluate it, you review the comments, and then you go through the public hearing process. And so, the public hearing process per state statute is intended to kind of account for that neighborhood aspect to it because the public hearing is open to the public. Now, there are specific standards in terms of that public hearing that is unique compared to a zoning map amendment, in terms of how significant the change is to the code itself. So there's certain tests that state statute says, that if the code impacts this amount of the overall code, then you have to notice the public in these ways. So it's a little different, again, from a zoning map amendment where you might just have to notice the community in specific ways or post the site. But for a text amendment, because we're impacting the entire county, there's going to be specific requirements on how you go about informing the community different than a map amendment. And so then, we go through the same steps. We have a Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, they make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, and then you make your final determination. Any questions about that before I jump in? So with that kind of foundation set, I wanted to kind of get into, okay, Matt, I get it, pretty standardized process in terms of amending the text of the zoning code, but what are some of the key principles we should keep in mind when we're thinking about drafting those zoning regulations? I mean, certainly, we've learned some things since zoning codes originated in the turn of the 19th century, or I'd like to think we have. But it's more about just avoiding trouble, you know? Interestingly, a lot of zoning codes that we work on probably would actually allow a skydiving school next to a crocodile farm. But it's not about just focusing on that lowest common denominator. When we get into zoning codes, I think communities also get in that rut of, we're always trying to prevent or restrict that worst-case scenario. But it's not always trying to look at those negative outcomes that you see on the screen here. What we want to start encouraging ourselves to think about is, how can we promote quality development? How can we improve the quality of life in our community and actually encourage good development as opposed to always trying to focus on, how are we going to restrict bad development, right? So, so what I wanted to run through are some of those legal requirements and/or best practices that we need to keep in mind when we're talking about considering text amendments to our zoning code. So the first few are really structured around legal requirements. And I'm glad Carolyn's behind me because she can kick me if I get astray here. But first and foremost, and even in state statute, the very first provision, when it gives the authority to a county or a municipality, the authority to have a zoning code is to protect, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, right? That's always what we hear is the basis for drafting zoning codes. We also need to make sure zoning codes are equal and fair. It does not discriminate or place a substantial burden on any specific group. So we want to make sure when we're drafting, we're not intentionally or unintentionally drafting something that's going to either overburden a specific social class or, we assisted a community once, there was a lot of legal aspects to this specific condition. But in this particular community, they did, they wanted to promote development and active development in their downtown. They had a lot of churches that were locating in their downtown. And so, in their zoning code, they actually knew they couldn't restrict churches, but that they would write in their code that churches would be required to submit a traffic study with their site plan applications. The federal government got a hold of this and contacted this community and said, "Well, do you require traffic studies for any other non-residential uses in your downtown?" And the city said, "No." And the government said, "Well, that doesn't seem like a very fair," even though it was even a church and so there was a whole nother constitutional aspect to it. But it's just a small example of, we need to make sure when we're making a requirement or a regulation that it is fair and balanced. We also need to make sure it's proportionate to what we're trying to control or a reasonable nexus between the government's demand and the effects of the proposed land use. So, you know, one might be open space. We commonly might look at our planned area developments, right? Where we say there's a certain percentage has to be open space. Well, we can't come in and just say, "Okay, we want to get some open space here, but we kind of forgot to really account for it. And so, we're going to make a requirement that 50% of the site needs to be open space." Well, you know, that starts getting into the realm of a taking, right? And so, we need to make sure that if we're saying we're going to be working for open space and parks, that it's relative to providing parks and it's not getting, you know, tipping the scale too much to then becoming a taking. Then the rest on the list is kind of the softer aspect of it, right? Protect from undesirable impacts on adjacent lands. We, well, probably when you have public in front of you, that's the, one of the most significant ones that residents are most concerned about is, "Hey, this use is going to impact my quality of life." Sometimes we're looking at amending the zoning code... Sometimes we're looking at amending the zoning code to promote specific business or industry within our municipalities. We always want to be sensitive to ensuring that we protect and maintain an attractive community. So looking at the aesthetics, considering the environment. But then procedurally, we were just, I was enjoying the conversation about the process in terms of the map amendment, and we need to make sure we maintain that open process, that it's transparent, that we're not changing the rules, right? Midstream, as was discussed. So that really walks us through some of those things that we would encourage all of our clients to keep in mind when they're looking to update their zoning code. What I wanted to pull up here is just to kind of let everyone, either listening or a refresher of, well, what does Pinell County zoning code actually entail? We keep talking about all of these provisions, but, I mean, how wide does this net go? And so here's all of the areas, the organization could be improved, but here are all the areas where the zoning code addresses. We have definitions, which are often overlooked. Definitions are very critical to your zoning code because you get into the nuances of the code and you start reading it, and then someone says, well, what do you mean by that? And then you go to the definitions, and there is no definition. Or the definition contradicts what the regulation says. So definitions is kind of very good that it's first and foremost because it actually, while some might blaze through it, is very critical. The zoning districts themselves, establishing the zoning map and the boundaries of those. And then the permitted uses, you know, what is, as Carolyn talked about, what is a permitted use by right, what is a conditional use? And then the development standards, what are the setbacks and what are the heights? It discusses off-street parking requirements, signs, a general provision, provisions, standards, and exceptions, specific uses. I wanted to pause on that one. I was listening to the conversation, and I think one of the things that if we're talking about updating a zoning code, that I would be, I would encourage consideration for, I guess, is think about the zoning code of often, there's a reason that regulation is there. We didn't, in most communities we work in, we often don't arrive at a regulation just because. There was something in the past of this municipality that was kind of the school of hard knocks of, oh, man, we're not going to get tripped up by that one again. And lo and behold, something gets put into the code. But then as time goes on, memories fade, economies change, and development conditions change. And then it's understood that, you know what, I don't think that really applies anymore. But one of the things that we, we find we have to be most sensitive to is talking about the zoning condition of, can we make this process go smoother? Is we also want to be sensitive to, I think, what communities see is they grant zoning. And then when you get to the site plan process, their development standards or the engineering standards that go along with that might not be, or consider all the nuances that go into that specific development. And so once the zoning's granted, and then they get to site plan, that hammer, if you will, that the county or municipalities have is somewhat more restricted. And so we want to make sure that we also don't put the county in a spot where, oh, we have to approve this now because we've given that zoning, and our engineering standards may not consider this traffic situation or this drainage situation, that if we would have looked at it a little earlier in the process, that we would have anticipated that and made sure that we're now in a situation where, oh, we have to approve it even though that's not maybe the best condition that we want to move forward with. So I'm not saying it's a universal condition. I'm not saying you can, you can't get around it, but it's hopefully something to ponder and consider. When we're looking at trying to streamline processes, because I think that is important, is that we also even look ahead of, okay, if we take it out here, how is it going to be addressed at the next stage when they come in for site plan?
Matt, can I?
Of course.
Because, I mean, we have standards and requirements for retention, egress, decel lanes, whatever it is, I mean. And if your traffic study hits this level, you're going to have to design that road under these conditions. I mean, I just think that we've already got so many of those types of regulations in place. It's not our, I don't think it's our responsibility to care what color they paint their building or if they set it over to the right or set it over to the left or whatever, however they want to do it. I mean, but as long as they meet the standards that we've set forth for the drainage, the traffic, you know, building height, or whatever it is that we've all established. And I just, that's my view, and I think we have a lot of that stuff in place already.
Yeah, I think that's a very practical way to look at it. And I, I think that is a way to make the process obviously go much smoother. Our job as a consultant, when we work with our clients, is to let, give them the information to make the most educated decision, and so.
Sure, I understand.
And so that would just be the aspect that I would say, before we make some of those recommendations, here's some things we may want to think about. But I agree with you is that some aspects that are already in place in terms of the site planning process could help to improve the process of a rezone or streamlining that whole component of the zoning code. So it certainly is something that should be looked at because engineering standards can evolve much easier, more easy than your zoning code. The other aspect is, we all know, is the public, right? When the public always wants to fast-forward right to, okay, what is it that you're developing? And that's not lost on you guys because you're the tip of the spear on that. So in that aspect, those are just a few thoughts that were coming to my mind as I was hearing the dialogue previously. So in terms of going beyond just what the zoning code covers, one of the things we wanted to also talk about is, I think, is you're aware, is the county obviously is working towards making some of these housekeeping amendments to the zoning code. And so here is a working list of just some of the broad topics that staff is already working towards in terms of making refinements to the Development Services Code or the zoning code to improve some of the conditions, I think, that were being discussed today. I mean, one another example is the P A Ds, right? We talk about how we can refine P A Ds or how we can make the P A D process consistent. One of the things that a code should always strive to is not even rely on using a P A D. A P A D should be a tool that is the last resort and not the first option. So can we amend the code to actually do the things that some of these developments are coming in and requiring a P A D just to adjust one thing? When, well, why can't we build it into the code and not require, you know, 100 different P A Ds that then staff has to be an expert on every time an application comes through and they have these unique requirements associated with when it could be all universal?
I agree. I think we use the P A D process too often. And we could, I mean, it's a crutch, in a way, is how I see it, used so often. And we should really look at that as being the exception to the rule rather than the rule.
Right.
I'm sorry.
No, that, I, as a planner, I would, I would agree with you. And so here's just some of the other broad topics in terms of process and procedures. That's, you know, we talked about, I think it's very prudent to always look at your process and to see where you might be able to make adjustments. But I will admit that we do get nervous when we start to simplify that because we never, we, there's many times where I've drafted regulations and I want to take one of these bows and put on it and say, man, that is wonderful. We did such a good job on that. And then the next day, it's approved. Someone comes through the door, asks a question, and the client calls me and goes, hey, what happens when this happens? And, nope, never thought of that. It's always a process where the development and the way our community grows is going to bring up situations that we don't anticipate. And so when we ask for things that sometimes just to insulate ourselves from those unexpected conditions. And so when we sometimes white-knuckle things, right? Because we're not ready to let go because we don't want to get to the back end where the public gets upset because we have to grant something just because we didn't think about it. So process and procedures can sometimes be challenging, but it's encouraging to hear a decision-making body that is sensitive to revisiting that. Zoning districts and regulations, that goes back to that P A D discussion of any type of overlays or infills or adaptive reuse, those types of things. Can we place into the code considerations for specific zoning districts? Accessory uses, buildings and structures and rural types of uses, that can become very dynamic, right? All the different conditions in rural conditions compared to urban. And Pinell County has both. And so that can become tricky. Signs, Carolyn mentioned. Home occupations was brought up earlier, that home occupations is, we think it's going to be something now that we're all Zoom-capable, right? Home occupations are just going to grow. And we're seeing communities calling us and saying, okay, hey, we need to update our home occupations. They're stale. They don't consider how the economy is today, and how can we improve that? Walls and fences, where do they go and what are they consist of? Off-street parking. Off-street parking is often ones where we're right-sizing our parking, right? We, in the past, historically, have had seas of parking where, okay, we're, one thing we're going to be sure of is everyone's going to have a spot when they come here. And so now it's getting more of, no, we need to recalibrate those parking requirements to say, maybe we don't need as much parking as we think we do. And also, obviously, the technology is changing as ride-sharing and those types of things become more prevalent. But we can infuse things in the code to make adjustments for that. Maybe we recalibrate our parking requirements, but we have a stipulation that allows people to submit a parking variance request. And they can justify why their parking should be lower than what the code says.
I want to bring up something where we used, we used an overlay for parking in downtown because we, people would look at projects downtown, and then they'd go away. And we'd say, well, why'd you go away? Because, well, because I can't meet the parking requirements. So we, and this is the other thing about the overlay, I think it's a really good use, but you can put boundaries on that, too. It's just from this street to that street, from that street to this street, and it just changes things. And we ran into the parking thing. We had these warehouses that only have six employees, and they had, you know, 82 parking spaces. And we're like, what does that accomplish? So anyway, just a couple of examples that I've experienced.
Well, and the overlay is great because, you know, again, we talk about the zoning code is a county-wide document, but then an overlay, just as you said, allows that often it's not universal, that, well, what we want to do over here isn't what we want to do over here. And so an overlay is a perfect way to say, okay, for this particular area, these provisions apply, and for this area, these do. And then we talk about the non-conformance aspect that Carolyn mentioned. So I think, you know, we understood that you're very aware of the zoning process, and we didn't want to, you know, throw very basic and baseline information to you, but we also did want to run through a presentation that at least set a foundation for, in some aspects, we have to do what we do. But there are aspects where we do have flexibility, but we want to temper that with understanding that, you know, there are reasons we often have something in the code, and it's not there just to make it harder on the applicant. There was something that occurred in the past that triggered it. Let's be prudent in revisiting that, but not ignoring that there are some things that we need to be or stay diligent on. So any other, I'll open it up to any other questions or thoughts about specific aspects within your districts or the code overall that would help to inform staff as they go through this? I'm sure you all reach out to staff when something comes up. But if there is a specific aspect of development or the code that you want to make sure staff is considering, we'd be interested to hear.
Supervisor Goodman, you're looking at me.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, you know, I've already brought the one up earlier, and I know we've been working with Hamachi and Lee Lester in regards to trying to address some of the home-based businesses that are within the rural areas. And some of them that have been there for years and have been established for years, even mechanic shops that have been, that just, you know, when they bought the property, they had these sticks, but they didn't really go through the process of, and we're talking years, 10 or 15 years, some of these locations. And they're inside these rural communities. And I'm not the only one that is dealing with this. And so, but understanding some of the flexibility that we do have available to us is very encouraging, to be honest with you, especially in light of some of the code enforcements that are going on, in particular, in my area, that, meeting with some of our public and talking with them, the landowners in those areas. And then, not only that, but the small businesses that are just starting out, that it's just a mom-pop, like, I'm thinking right off the top of my head, there's an A C company. They started out in a residential area, and he ended up with a couple of trucks, had one employee. And he bought a piece of property in the rural area because of commercial properties, non-existence virtually, or the cost is so outrageous, that he moved into one of these mini-farms, put a shop in, cleaned up the area, makes it look really nice. And now he's still, now he's out of code enforcement. And so he's being, he's being served with these issues. And so, and he's just him and two other employees, and they take their vehicles home. But nonetheless, he's just making a living. He has no intention of getting any bigger than what he is. And, you know, it's the small businesses that are actually the backbone of our country. And so, you know, personally, I just feel a need that we need to do something to, as that transition. And as they grow, we help them get into some other locations. And I think that's where good government comes from, to help encourage and bring, anyway. So that's, but understanding a little bit better that we have that kind of flexibility to do all this is very helpful.
You know, the whole dynamics of working from home. I mean, you could argue that, you know, you're not maybe running a business, but you're doing business from your house. I mean, this is going to make a big shift and change, I think, in our, just in our society going forward. I think you're going to see more and more, next thing you know, FedEx is dropping off paperwork for you or something to that effect. I mean, all of a sudden, then somebody wants to know, how come there's so much tracking in front of your house? Well, I'm working from home. Well, you know, I mean, I can just, I can visualize the unintended consequence of that. Good or bad, there is a big shift to working from. good or bad, there is a big shift to working from home. I mean, it's just, it's just reality.
Right, yeah, no.
So, so I don't know, you know, you could have a homeowners association that gets a little upset about something like that. Next thing you know, we're, we're looking at the zoning code. So, anyway.
Yes. You zeroed in on two, on two aspects that are very top of mind in a lot of communities. So we just got out of assisting one community with home-based businesses in a rural area and was a robust conversation, I'll say that. So, but we arrived at a consensus, you know? We didn't get 100% agreement, but after a fair number of pages of code, there was some consensus on home occupation. So I think you're very, you've got a finger on the pulse in terms of things that are happening in our communities that we need to just nurture.
And that's good to know that this isn't your first rodeo, so that's good.
Yes, yeah, oh, zoning codes, not for everyone, but it is something that we, we do and we like to think we do well, so.
These, these subdivisions for rent, this is a big thing coming down.
Yep, built to rent, yes.
Rent, and that has, really has more unintended consequences than you might think, but anyway.
Oh, it's, it's, again, absolute conversation, we, I'll have that conversation this afternoon, actually, with another client. And, and there's a lot of nuances, like you said, to it. It's not just about the density of them and how they're designed, but long-term, how, you know, what they will be, will they always be rentals? How do you ensure that?
And my thing has been to the water issue because it's, it's being used as a, around, to get around the certificate of assured water.
Hmm, interesting. I have not heard that one.
Yeah, well, I have. So, and I predicted it. I mean, I knew it was coming. Because they, these guys are sitting on two millions and billions of dollars of land, and they have no intention of holding on to it forever. They're going to figure out a way to make something out of it. And this rental, rental subdivision has been one of them.
Yeah, that's a claim to fame for Arizona. Originated here and it's kind of exploding across the country, yeah.
I think Casa Grande's approved like four of those units, subdivisions. Anything else, any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Leo, did you have something?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, but Supervisor McClure, did you have something first? I can go after. One item that's come up a couple of times, and I don't know if Supervisor Kavanaugh wants to bring it up and talk about it, but the concept of primary and secondary uses and those requirements, it can cut both ways, of course, you know, and, but certain concepts of whether there's areas where you can enforce that, if it has to be consistent countywide, or characteristics of some areas may be more flexible because of the nature of the area where others aren't.
So I'll give you an example.
Yeah, please, please do.
So we have a gentleman who owns 40 acres out in the middle of nowhere in my district. And he drives and brings his friends with four A T Vs from Phoenix, and they come down here and they spend a whole weekend. And he wants to put a Connex box we can lock his, his A T Vs in. Well, he doesn't have a primary use and, you know, so he can't have a Connex box because it's ugly in the middle of nowhere, and there's nobody within sight. That's a, that's one good example. I have another gentleman, you know, housing is hard to come by, and he bought a lot down near Oracle and put an R V on it, and he asked for water and sewer and electrical hookups. I don't have sewer, but water and electrical hookups. And he got water, but because of zoning, wouldn't get, get him an authorization, the power company wouldn't hook up electricity. And he runs a generator, which causes the neighbors to complain because there's a generator running because he needs air conditioning at night so he can go to work during the day and, and have some rest. So these are some of the issues that, you know, that have, just some of the issues that have come up with respect to primary and secondary uses.
And, and if I may, if I may, third scenario is where somebody goes and builds their barn first and lives in the barn and then decides that they're going to build the house, but they want to be on-site while they're building it, you know? And so that's, that, that's another scenario and.
And, and so you're describing things that, you know, going back to that situation where we talk about, let's think about why the code is the way it is. And, and we can understand this notion of there's always bad actors. And so in, in certain districts, you have to have a primary because you don't want this secondary or accessory use to become the constant, right? That someone comes in, in maybe a more urbanized area is probably a more often situation where you might have an empty lot and someone then puts an R V and ends up deciding, yeah, I think those R Vs good enough. And, and then the house never gets built, right?
Right.
But what we're hearing in this situation is it's a rural area, and so can we be more flexible in a rural area? And, and that's where you have to have those conversations either in a public setting to understand all the nuances or get into certain communities. And so I, I think it's very standard for communities in their zoning codes to have regulations that say you have to have a primary use before you can have an accessory use. But they do make exceptions. Those exceptions usually only consist of you can have a trailer if you're constructing a home, but you must have an active permit and it must be for only certain period of time. And so there's some types of bumpers that are usually put on it. But everyone's unique. And so if the county feels it in certain districts and we don't get a lot of concern from pub, from the public, that could be a situation where we do need a unique regulation that allows for that scenario. But, but in essence, those would be looked at in certain aspects as a principal use as opposed to a secondary use if it was anticipated that it was going to be there permanently, right? So I think, I don't know that we would, I'd have to consider it a little bit longer, but I don't know that we'd be looking at, hey, how can we allow these accessory or secondary uses? It's almost like what principal uses are we going to allow and what use requirements are we going to put on them if we do?
Well, if we, in, in the R V instance, he can't afford to build a house, so why would he get a permit? But he would get a permit, he and I talked about, you could get a permit just to buy you some time, you know, to, to, so you have a place to live. I mean, I'm not sure his skill level will allow him to get a job that, that gets him to an income where he can buy a house, particularly in this.
In this market, yeah.
And, and you, again, to Carolyn's point, you have flexibility to craft, and we all, we often like to use the term, how can we make the code elegant? How can we be as creative as we can in the least amount of words to, to allow for what we all kind of nod our head of? That should be reasonable. And so, you know, we would look at the situation and say, okay, what, what do we want to make sure we're not promoting? So, you know, in this situation, maybe we draft language that if a storage container is utilized for a certain condition by the property owner, it may be permitted. I'm just talking off the top of my head here, so I don't want Legal to get too nervous. But, but the other aspect is we have to think through of, okay, and we always, often when we craft something in the office, we'll say, okay, everyone, gather around and break the code. Someone come up with scenario and tell me, okay, but what if someone does this? And when we break the code is, okay, we might say you can have that storage container, but guy next door says, oh, I'm going to put one on and now I'm going to rent it to someone and they're going to store all their stuff in it. And that's different, right? And so those types of things we have to make sure we think about. And we need to think about, okay, what size storage container or how many? And those types of things. So unfortunately, when we get into those select conditions, everyone always says, well, why don't we just de kind of regulate? Why don't we simplify the code? But you open yourself up. And so the code does tend to grow when we start to tend to try to allow more things. And so people think, you know, why is the code so long? And in some instances, it's actually because it's trying to be more, more open-ended as opposed to, oh, we'll just, we'll just simplify it and let it be kind of a free-for-all. So a little side note, the city of Houston actually is the only large city in the county that does not have a zoning code. Every large community and most small and definitely every county has a zoning code. So it's, it's interesting if you've visited Houston, they do not have a zoning code. But based on that scenario themselves, that, that tells us that it is prudent to have. And so we just need to nurture it and, and keep it top of mind, that it shouldn't be something that, okay, like the comp plan, okay, we touched it, we'll revisit it 10 years from now. You might update your code and find out two months later that, hey, there's something else. Let's, let's tweak that, let's refine this. And it's an iterative process.
Does Houston have any Connex boxes downtown?
I'm, I'm going to imagine they do.
Interestingly, the gentleman pointed out that we as a county have Connex boxes everywhere. The sheriff's got them. We've got one outside our mammoth office.
We can't really go down that path. We got a shooting range nobody knew about.
Earmuffs, earmuffs.
Well, I enjoyed this. And I'm, I don't know if I did too much dialogue with you, but anyway, it is something that, of course, I lived that life for many years, and I can probably go on with all kinds of examples. And I know we're, the code, and I, I can appreciate what you're saying. All I can think of is we're trying to maneuver our way through this thing and still allow, but have control type of thing, so.
Yep.
It's very difficult.
Mm-hmm, it is.
Yeah, so I guess the reason behind all of this was to help educate us and, and hopefully the public as well through this process. So what are the next steps?
That's Leo's job.
I'll let Himachi speak to that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Himachi Patel. So this was an educational aspect, but I think about maybe eight months ago, we already commissioned Michael Baker and associates to revamp our code. And so we're going through the various different chapters and sections of the code. The last time we did a major overhaul was in 2012. So it's getting to be almost 10 years from now. So we've started the process, there's a lot of drafts that have been developed through the staff side of it. And we'll be coming to the board as part of work sessions to get into the details of the changes that are, that are being proposed, as well as the discussion that has taken place here, how can we make additional changes based on your guidance today? So that'll be coming before you. P and Z has started an initiation process already and then go through the motion of the adoption process. In terms of the, the important aspect of the processes and procedures that you, you indicated today, the areas that we need to enhance and, and make efficiencies, we have commissioned a consultant to come in to evaluate all of our processes in community development and development services and start evaluating the areas that we need to make changes and streamline the process as it becomes. And then some of those aspects could be embedded into the, the codes that, because many of our processes are already identified in the code. And so those changes then can take place in consistency based on the recommendations from the consultant, so.
Okay, good deal. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Sure.
Colonel, please.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisors, you know, I'm sitting here thinking, well, what was the fastest zoning code ever or zoning amendment case? And it was here. And it was this year, and it was handled by my partner. It was in Supervisor Kavanaugh's district, but it was the kind of thing where there was an existing abandoned use on a property, a building. It was zoned for industrial uses. The, the use our client wanted required a commercial use, a down zoning. But then that put us in non-conforming aspects with the development standards. So then we needed to throw a P A D at it to alter the setbacks in some of the development standards, and we needed a use permit. And we did all of those things in three months.
You ran all of those things parallel.
Mm-hmm, yep. So it's possible. And so I just wanted to say that you do run a real efficient process on occasion.
On occasion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else? Thank you, thank you again, both of you. Great presentation, I appreciate it. This meeting is adjourned.